November twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three Voting Meeting of Exeter Township School Board. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mrs. Harris, can you please take roll call?
Okay, Dr. Herring?
Present.
Mr. Fidler?
Here.
Dr. Battler?
Here.
Dr. Hamburger?
Here.
Mr. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Quinter?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer?
Here.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris. In addition to the nine board members in attendance this evening, we're also joined at the table by our Solicitor Sharon Montaigne and members of the school district administration, including Dr. Kristi Howler Superintendent, Mrs. Dawn Harris Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Josh Hoyt Director of Teaching and Learning, and Mrs. Diane Skravatsky Director of Human Resources. Before we get started tonight, I wanted to do a couple of acknowledgements. Next month is our reorganization meeting where we welcome two new board members, which means today will be the last meeting for two of our esteemed colleagues. Dr. Hamburger and Mr. Quinter have been, have given selflessly of their time, knowledge, and love for our school community. Dave has dedicated eight years on this board and Bob on and off since birth? I'm sorry, no. For eighteen years, I believe? Wonderful. It's been an honor to work with you both and your knowledge and experience will be missed. On behalf of the board and our community, I'd like to thank you for your hard work and dedication. Here's a gift for each of you. Here we go. And Dawn has one last acknowledgement.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Additionally, we have a certificate of appreciation from PSBA for Dr. Hamburger for his eight years of service on the school board in recognition of ongoing school board service and the long-term contributions of individuals who bring their energy, talent, and values to the guidance of youth and public education in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Congratulations, Dr. Hamburger.
After the meeting, we'll have cake and everyone's welcome to join us afterwards, please. Anyone want to say anything? Everyone's good. Go ahead.
Aye. If I may, excuse me, sir. By your leave. Dave and Bob, you'll notice that the Rolex watches did not come in, so they will be shipped to you by Christmas.
Unlike the other members sitting around this table, this time I was not elected. But I was selected by you all and I appreciate that. I've enjoyed my time with you. I'm in Wrighton if you ever need anybody to fill in again, so appreciate it very much.
If I could just say a few words too, just want to say, you know, it really has been a pleasure and an honor to serve, you know, with everybody here. We've been through a lot, I mean, over the past eight years, we've been through COVID, which was really a fairly dramatic event that changed so much of what we did and I think, you know, we came through, I think, for the better, I hope. Just want to give the folks who are on the board and continuing on the board, you know, my best wishes for continued success. You do a great job, this has been a great board to work with. You know, we don't always agree on the outcome of our discussions and decisions, but one of the things that's always impressed me about this board is the civility, the respect, you know, and the way this board deals with the governance responsibilities. We don't always see that in our community and I think this board sets an example, which is just remarkable. So I want you to keep up the good work and I'll be watching. Thank you.
Okay, great.
I'll just say too, thank you to both of you. I just want to acknowledge that we really are going to miss both of the knowledge that you both bring. Dr. Hamburger to public education and Bob to the history of the school district and how you always remember everything, like the way we did this and how we made this decision. It's been, it's been really, you know, interesting to learn about these things and you've both been amazing to work with, so good luck and enjoy relaxing.
Okay, we'll move forward then to a presentation of the two thousand and twenty-two audit by Herbine and Company.
Okay, good evening, my name's Roxanne McMurtry from Herbine and Company. Tonight I'm here to present the two thousand and twenty-two financial audit. So I gave you two packets, the thicker one is the actual audited financial statements and then I gave you what is a thinner packet and that's the summary presentation that we're going to go through. That's what I just tried to send through to the email, so hopefully that'll come through and he can get that up on the screen for you there. So we do this summary presentation, it's a little easier rather than flipping through all the financial statements, so we'll go through that with you tonight. Again, this is for June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two and it's just the financial audit. So on your first page that says overview at the top, we're just letting you know what's included in this packet as well as at the bottom, there's just a little disclosure that this is for your information only, just because we don't want it to be misconstrued as the actual audited financial statements. The next slide then, if he wants to just go ahead, like two slides. There's, across the top of your page it says introduction. Oh, I have a clicker. Sorry about that. There we go, okay, here we go. Okay, so we're on the introduction page, we're just letting you know that our audit is conducted under generally accepted auditing standards and also government auditing standards, which is the yellow book. And at the bottom, we're letting you know that our responsibility is to obtain reasonable assurance about whether your financial statements are free from material misstatement, whether due to fraud or error, and then we render an opinion on whether those financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects in conformity with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. The next page lets you know our opinion on those financial statements. You do have an unmodified opinion under generally accepted auditing standards. That is a clean audited opinion from an independent auditor and at the bottom, we just have a note letting you know that this is not an opinion on the internal controls because that was not the objective of this audit. Okay? Your next page then is your new statement that we, new standard that we implemented in these financial statements this year, giving you some information about GASB eighty-seven. This relates to leases. Previously, you had some operating leases, they would have been reported as operating or capital leases. So we now are reporting your copier lease as a lease. You do also have some leases with computers and buses that are now considered financed purchase. They were previously reported as capital leases. So just a note at the bottom there, letting you know the change to your financial statement. We did add a right-to-use lease asset as well as the related lease liability. So that would be a change in these financial statements for this year. The next slide is your general fund budget versus actual information. So the very bottom line on this slide that says net change in fund balance, you can see that you budgeted to have a loss of about one point seven million, had an actual loss of about seven hundred and twenty-three thousand. That was due to favorable variances in both revenues and expenditures on used budgetary reserve. So looking at the revenues on this page, your first orange highlighted line there, orange highlighted line is for your total revenues. They came in about three point eight percent over budget. You had local revenue variances, the first line there, favorable variances in your earned income taxes, your transfer taxes and your mercantile taxes, and that was offset by a decrease in your real estate tax revenue. The next two lines then, your state and your federal revenues, were also over budget. You had some additional subsidies come in over budget from the state as well as you had S.R. grant monies that were spent, so the revenue was recognized in relation to that. The next orange highlighted line there, your total expenditures, they were over budget about four point three percent and we're going to go into that detail on the next page. The general fund expenditures then, very bottom line there, orange, you can see over budget about the three point four million that I just mentioned. Overspending that we had in regular programs was mostly in salary and benefits. Some of the other larger variances, you had vocational education, there was an increase in enrollment there. Student support services was mostly due to two new positions that were created after the budget was done. Operation and maintenance of plant, you had unbudgeted S.R. three expenditures, mostly for HVAC cleaning and then other maintenance projects and supplies were in that function. In your student activities, that came in over budget because your transportation was charged to that line but budgeted to the transportation line as well as you had higher participation rates returning from COVID. And then the last line there for capital outlay, that was over unbudgeted capital purchases, so over budgeted due to capital assets that you purchased that weren't included in the budget. Then budget savings you had in your instructional staff support, mostly in salaries and benefits, you had two eliminated positions there. Student transportation came in under budget, as I mentioned, because you budgeted student activities there but coded it to the student activities function. And then central support services was mostly in salaries and benefits due to moving some positions to other functions. Next page then that we have is your general fund balance sheet. This page shows you your total assets, liabilities, and your fund balance at the very bottom. The blue highlighted line gives you your total fund balance there, about fifteen point nine million. The non-spendable line is for prepayments of expenditures for the next fiscal year. Your committed fund balance includes future PERS rate increases as well as for property taxes and other improvements. And then your assigned fund balance there of about nine point four million does include your two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three budget appropriations as well as additional amounts for future pension obligation, contractual wage and benefit increases, and equipment and turf replacements. Okay? The next page then gives you a little bit of information about your general fund balance. So the first section there that we have says unassigned, the middle says total general fund, and then the last includes your capital reserve monies. So the first section would be just your unassigned fund balance in the general fund. That's about five point zero eight percent of next year's budgeted expenditures. That's under the average there that we're showing you for the three years, but that is within your district's policy, which is to be between five and eight percent of next year's budget expenditures. Okay. The next page then that you have is for your other governmental funds and your other governmental fund is your capital projects fund. This fund does have fund balance of about six point five million. That does include your unspent bond proceeds of about two point five million as well as your capital reserve funds, which is about just under four million. And there was no new debt issuances in these financial statements, but you've obviously had some after this year end. The next page then is a summary for your food service fund. Food service fund is a proprietary fund, so it functions more like a for-profit business. We like to give you some current year comparing to the prior year information here. So in two thousand and twenty-two, the last two, four lines from the bottom where it says income-loss, I'm sorry, three lines from the bottom where it says change in net position. You did have an increase in net position in the food service fund this year of about eight hundred and fifty-five thousand compared to a loss last year of about eighteen thousand. What we're showing you at the bottom is the adjustments for your net pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities, the effect that that has on the expenses. Most food service departments that we work with, they like to know the result of their actual operations. So that for two thousand and twenty-two line where we're showing the hundred and seventeen thousand, your expenditures were decreased a hundred and seventeen thousand this year by adjusting all of your pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities. So your true result of operations before those adjustments was that very last line there that shows about seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Okay? Comparing to prior year, you had the increase in the food service revenue, the first line, just because of returning to in-person and having more à la carte sales. And then in the operating expenses, mostly increases there because of increase in supplies. Again, additional meals served, return in-person, and all the meals were free in this fiscal year as well as just an increase in prices for supplies. So any questions so far? Okay. The next page then is just the snapshot of the balance sheet there for your food service fund. This is showing you that that net deficit that you have in the food service fund at the very bottom, just over one million dollars, is driven by those liabilities that I previously mentioned in the liability section that says net pension liability and the other post-employment benefit liability, which are over two million dollars. So that's what drives that deficit at the bottom. Without those liabilities and the related deferred inflows and outflows of resources, you would have a positive net position of about one point one million and that's about seven months of your operating expenses. The next slide that we have in here just shows you where some of the key footnotes are in the other, the actual audited financial statement packet that I gave you. So if you're looking for information on any of these things, you can just refer to those footnotes in those actual audited financial statements. The next page gives you a little bit of information about the finding that we did have in those financial statements. So we did have some material adjustments and account reconciliations as a result of the audit. We did propose adjusting journal entries, those were provided to the business office and they did post those to your records. And management's response is included in the back of those audited financial statements. Lastly here, we have some information that's summarized for the management letter. That's a letter that we'll be providing. In here, we have some information about financial closing reporting processes, some recommendations for additional controls or processes that could be improved such as having all checks approved by the board. I'm not sure if you've started doing this yet or not because we did discuss that with Brian, but previously the food service and the student activity checks weren't being approved by the board. We do recommend that all checks from all funds be approved by the board, documentation of the bank reconciliation process and supporting documentation for the journal entries as well as timely deposits for the student activity fund, and a little bit of information about retirement subsidy receivable calculation. These were all things that we've discussed with the business office and they'll work on making those improvements. And then lastly, the auditor communication letter. That letter does contain some information about some delays in the completion of the audit. You did have some significant turnover in your business office this year and that did delay wrapping up this audit. The journal entries are attached to that letter, we're disclosing the most sensitive estimates that are in your audited financial statements. And again, that letter does discuss the implementation of that new GASB eighty-seven standard related to leases. The next couple pages then that you have are just information about new standards. So this new standard ninety-six will be effective for this year's audit, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the next page is two other standards that will be coming in future years. Lastly, you have our contact information, oops, I skipped over that. If you need to contact me, you have any questions for me, please feel free to contact me, there's my email address. And lastly, some information about Herbine. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Just probably more clarification, I know some of the language mentions current year, which may be a little confusing, but the audit is actually doing two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two.
This is your fiscal year end at June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, yes.
And two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three will be done probably springtime next year?
We're going to be starting that in January. So we also did not yet complete the single audit, which would be the audit of your federal programs for this fiscal year. So in January, I know you needed this for your bond issue. So January, we're going to finish the single audit related to this year and then do the full two thousand and twenty-three audit.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, if not, thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. Okay, we will not be amending tonight's agenda, so we'll move on to the superintendent report, Dr. Howler.
There we go. Thank you, Dr. Herring. I would firstly to recognize Dr. Hamburger and Mr. Quinter for their service to the Exeter Township School District. And just on behalf of the school administration, it's been a pleasure to work with you both. I'd also like to take this opportunity to welcome back Dr. Herring, Mr. Fidler, and Mrs. Wilson. We are very much looking forward to continuing our work together and I'm also very excited to welcome new board members, Ms. Bloom and Mr. Odom, who will be joining us at the board table here on December fifth. In addition to that, I'd like to highlight the work of our staff on Election Day, which was a professional development day for us. Our morning began with Detective Sergeant DiCamillo and Detective Pendle from Exeter P.D. sharing with our staff the dangers of social media and the various, and various apps. The presentation specifically focused on sexting and sextortion. I greatly appreciated Chief Harley also mentioning this information at the Exeter Supervisors Meeting to highlight the potential dangers of social media and its impact on the school district. We will be providing a parent session on December twelfth, six o'clock, at Exeter Senior High School in the LGI Room. The presentation will be given by Detective DiCamillo and Ms. Alicia Lenhart, the district's K- twelve student support coordinator. Speaking on behalf of the Exeter Township School District, we are very grateful for the support of Exeter P.D. and we appreciate the opportunities we have to partner with them to provide this information to our staff and our parents. Lastly, on November tenth and thirteenth, our three elementary schools celebrated Veterans' Day by hosting veterans and their families. Our students sang patriotic songs and read poems. Thank you again to the Exeter Police Department for participating in our programs and to all of the officers in the Exeter Police Department who have served in the military. We would also like to thank Detective Rocco DiCamillo for speaking at our celebrations. Detective DiCamillo is a decorated veteran of the Marine Corps. And I would also like to recognize Mr. Quinter, who is also a decorated member of the Marine Corps, veteran of the Marine Corps, and a veteran of the Vietnam War. I believe that celebrating Veterans' Day is so important to our school community. We are very fortunate to live in a country where we are free, but more important, it's a reminder that freedom isn't free. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Howler. Okay, we're going to move on to public comments relating to tonight's agenda, which will be following Board Policy nine zero three regarding public participation in board meetings. I'd like to emphasize that each statement made by a participant shall limited to four-minute duration. At the four-minute mark, I would ask that the statement be quickly wrapped up. We have a commenter, Jason Croft. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Jason Croft, I live at thirty-seven twenty-four St. Lawrence Avenue in St. Lawrence. First, I want to congratulate the incumbents that won the election two weeks ago as well as the two new members that will be joining. I learned a lot in the election cycle or in the election process myself and definitely plan on using that moving forward. The main reason I'm here actually is to comment on the Exeter football and Antietam deal. As someone with a master's degree in sports management from West Virginia, as a football official in Berks County, and as someone who's been, I'd say, watching or from a distance, watching the team progress through the years. Two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight, the football program was oh and ten. One and nine in two thousand and nine, they were four and six in two thousand and ten before they started to build. They've won a Burke Section One title, it was either two thousand and fifteen or sixteen. This was, I was in college when it happened, so one of those years. Two thousand and twenty-one, they won the five A District Three championship. Made it to the state final four. And then they hosted the following year, the five A District Championship for District Three. And then this year, they lost in the first round, but it's kind of like the stock market, you have up and downs. But what Matt Bauer has done for the football program over the past fifteen years is nothing short of remarkable. And I don't want to see Exeter move up to six A. I don't think they'll ever go oh and ten again. However, if you ever want to see Exeter host a playoff game and make it far in the playoffs, they're not going to do it, competing against school districts that are five times the size of Exeter Township. So I would just want you guys to kind of think about that when you are voting. I think the board is going to kind of side with what the football program kind of wanted based on what Bauer said in the previous meeting. But the program right now has a lot of momentum going for it, so moving up is not going to help. So, I mean, if I had a vote, I would abstain being an official in Berks County, but I would just recommend you guys cut off Antietam if you have to, unfortunately for them, but you got to look out for yourselves first, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Croft, I appreciate your statement and comments. Okay, next is board meeting minutes. If there's no objection, we'll adopt a motion to approve meeting minutes from last month's board meetings. October third, Committee of a Whole, and October seventeenth, Board Voting Meeting. Hearing no objections, the minutes are approved. Treasurers' Report and Payment Requests, if there's no objection, we will adopt a motion to approve the October two thousand and twenty-three Treasurer's Report and Payment Request dated October eighteenth to November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Hearing no objections, the Treasurer's Report and Payment Requests are approved. Next, Education Committee, Dr. Battler.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. First, under A is the district monthly enrollment report. If anybody has any questions or comments about that? Nope?
I do have a question, I guess for Dr. Howler. The Exeter Cyber Academy and the Out-of-District Cyber Charter, numbers are pretty close. Are we still trying to lure some of those in the outer cyber charter schools to come into Exeter? Is that, I know when Dan was heading that, he was making phone calls, having meetings, are we still doing that?
Yes, Jason Delesky, who took over for Dan Wilczek, it does try and encourage families to come back. I can't say for certain, but oftentimes people will transfer in and they're already in a program, so they might not want to move their child, but we do reach out to families and ask them to come back. I'm not sure if that's been done recently, but I can certainly check on that and see when the last time that was done.
Thank you.
Moving on, it's reported that the following field trips within a sixty-mile radius have been approved. There are some items, well, nine items that were added at the bottom, so one through twenty-six. See if they have any questions or concerns about those? No? Okay, good. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following Education Committee items. First, the following list of staff conferences, which includes a few that were added.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following Education Committee items. Number two, the early graduation requests for students eight seven one two three two four and eight seven three two three two four in January and a student eight seven two two three two four, sorry, I thought I read that the same, in June two thousand and twenty-four, per district policy two one seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following Education Committee items. Number three, the appointment of Jennifer Lubis as a parent representative and Megan Blue as a local business person slash parent representative for the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And finally, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following Education Committee items. A tuition agreement between New Story LLC and the Exeter Township School District to provide special education services for student eight seven zero two three two four for the twenty-three twenty-four school year at a cost of five hundred and fifty-one dollars per day for a total cost of eighty thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And that is all for the Education Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Battler, Personnel Committee, Mrs. Schaefer.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. We have the personnel consent agenda up. It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. I'm going to pull out- I'm going to pull out number two, so we're going to vote on items 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items. Item number two, retirements. Dr. Margaret Wright will be retiring with eight years of service on January 6, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
We'd just like to say thank you to Dr. Wright for her years of service to the district, and she will obviously be missed, and we're currently looking for her replacement, as this is a critical position to the district in looking at our specialty, our science standards at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. First item up on the agenda is a discussion item for the Pennsylvania American Water Rate Increase. I think, Dr. Haller, did you have something you wanted to say on that to start with?
So, this has sparked a lot of discussion at our cabinet meeting about this, this water increase. Like many residents here in the township who get their water from Pennsylvania American Water, this is going to hit the school district very hard, and it's something that we are thinking about as far as crafting the budget. Utilities here cost a substantial amount of money, because we do have six schools that we have electric and water costs were, because right now we're in a contract for our electric, but that will soon be up, and then we'll have to negotiate a price for that. Plus, we have the bus garage in this building. So, it's something that's very challenging for Brian to often determine what water costs essentially are going to be, because our buildings, especially our, our high school, are very heavily used, and when they're being used, that increases the amount of water. So we just wanted to make sure that it was on the board's radar. That is something that we're going to be looking at, and as Brian starts to craft the budget, we'll be looking more closely at that, because that'll be a definite area that you'll see increasing in that line item.
And just to add to what Dr. Haller had said, the, the request for the rate increase, which is about 30%, was submitted to the PUC by Pennsylvania American Water back on November 8th. The, there is a method of filing a complaint with the PUC if you are against the rate increase, which they are accepting until, I believe, January 7th. So I believe, my question would probably be more for, for Mrs. Montaigne or Solicitor. Would, if the board would be interested in directing the administration to file any complaint to the PUC on behalf of the district, would that need to be an official vote at a future voting meeting, or could that be something that's more of a discussion and straw poll?
Really, I think you, it's, it's not really a board action. It's a directive to the administration to file, to file if they're, if you're an eligible entity to file a complaint. I'd have to look into that. But it's not a vote to
Yeah.
File the complaint.
Yeah. So the, the question I would have is, is anyone on the board willing to entertain doing that or having the administration do that and file a complaint with the PUC to, to put the district down on record that we're against the rate increase?
Absolutely. I think that we need to. And I think this is going to be difficult, I mean, for the administration too. I mean, because this is not unique to the district. Our taxpayers are going to be taking a significant increase as well, beyond what they're already paying, and so, you know, we're going to all have to start to look at places where we have to supplement in order to make that up. And so I think anything that we can do is the right thing. And I guess the follow-up to that, Mr. Mel, would be, you know, as we look at building use by non-district use, is, is it something that we're going to have to look at increasing the rate that we charge for those people as a result, for those, for those organizations as a result of this, to help supplement or offset? I'm, we're not looking, obviously, we're not making money on this, but at least to offset the cost of the water usage? And is there a way that we can do some analytics to find out what that usage is outside of district use?
I'm not sure that they can narrow that down. I mean, perhaps they, they, they might be able to do so, but that is one of the areas that Brian has, has discussed, looking at the potential use of groups, and then increasing the fee in which they would pay for the use of the facility because of the increased utilities that we have to, to put out when people are using that building. So that's something that we're definitely looking at, but we can check with him about if he can narrow that down.
Is the board prohibited from submitting a complaint?
As, as an individual?
The board. This is the board.
Thank you. I didn't realize.
I'm not talking individual. Are we prohibited as a public?
I would have, I would have to look into that. I would suspect not, but I, I don't know what the parameters for filing an appeal would be.
I, I would suggest, and I'm not going to be here, but as an elected body, I would think that that would have increased stature over just the administration filing it. In other words, you are an elected body, and putting that representing the residents of this township, I would think that it would be appropriate for the board to submit that objection, and citing the increased expenses which will fall upon the residents of the township. So it's, you're an elected body. It'd be just like the Treasury Department coming in or something. I think that would hold more weight, quite frankly.
I would imagine for that, that would have to be an official vote, though, if we wanted to do that, submit that as an elected body versus giving a directive to the administration.
It would be, but it, in essence, it is the district that is submitting an appeal. So it is effectively coming from the board,
Right.
even if the administration is the one that does, fills out all the paperwork and, and does that. I mean, the administration is
Behalf of the board of directors.
Correct, right.
David, have we heard anything from PSBA or the IU? I mean, we can't be the only district that's dealing with this situation. I mean, we've been taking these increases for, obviously, 30% is pretty significant. I'm, I'm interested to know if there's a response from a higher level.
No. I mean, I just attended a board meeting last Thursday, and there was no comment about that, and I haven't seen anything on PSBA either, but I, I would be very surprised if we didn't hear more. Now, I forget how many municipalities actually are part of American, American Water Supplies have contracts with them, but it's, it's not the whole state, you know, so it's selected areas, but school districts are going to be affected, and I think they're just, just finding that out now, so we may be, you know, on the front of the curve on that.
But I do think that we're, we're stronger together, you know, if we can identify them, or, you know, maybe the IU has a suggestion. I don't know how many of, how many of our districts within the county are going to be affected by this.
Yeah, it's, we're, we're definitely probably in a more unique position here because our wastewater rates already being high. I think we're, we're feeling it probably a little bit more than, than other districts that, that may be facing the rate increase, but it, it's not a bad idea.
I'm in support of doing it as well. Definitely.
Any, any objections? Okay. Moving on to item B, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the disposal of senior high school social studies books with the attached lists that are in poor condition and no longer used.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Item C, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors accepts the fiscal year 2021-2022 audit report as prepared by Herbine &amp; Company, Inc., and authorizes distribution of the report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Can we actually have clarification as to why we're doing this all in one meeting? Just a quick statement. Thank you.
So, the audit was obviously delayed. This was last year's audit. Part of the reason was we used a different company called Malle, and they are no longer doing school audits. So thankfully, Herbine was able to, to do the audit. So that was one delay in, in this process. The reason why we are doing this in the voting meeting opposed to the presentation at one meeting and then voting on it at the next meeting, which is our typical process, is that it was dependent, PFM needed this, this audit to be able to complete the transaction for the district to secure the money to move forward with the capital projects that we have identified. And later, well, very shortly, you'll have something called the GISA on here, which outlines all the projects that we're going to be moving forward with. So that's why it was just very important that all of this be done now, because we're on a very short timeline to, to get the, the process, to get the process and the timeline rolling.
Thank you, Dr. Haller. Appreciate that. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Item D is the consent agenda. I am actually going to be pulling out item four, which was added to the voting meeting, was not part of the Committee of the Whole. So this will just be voting on items one, budget transfers, item two, the Act One Resolution, and item three, the Idea B, Special Education.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Item four, it is recommended the Board of School Directors approves the following finance facilities and audit items, the amendment to the GISA Guaranty and Energy Savings Contract with Quandale Consultants LLC in the amount of $28,395,293 with the attached.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I did have a, a few questions for Quandale, if, if somebody would be able to potentially come to the mic, just a, a couple of questions on the agreement. I just wanted to get clarified. Thanks, John. The Schedule A, there were, there were some things that had contingency costs that we had talked about before, $300,000, I think, for like oil tank removal and some things like that, but I did not see the $600,000 for the senior high school pipeline failure risk.
That, that is included in the project.
Okay. So that is something that we can
Oh, absolutely.
verify that that's, that is in there?
It's definitely in there, and if it's not written there, that is something we can amend.
Okay.
You know, and before we execute it, we'll make sure that language is in there.
The, the other one I was going to ask about, the junior high school also had a contingency of $300,000 based on the quality, quantity of the AV system. Is that already figured out? Because I know there were some components already picked out.
Yeah, so just briefly, yeah, that $300,000 is not in the project, but the scope of work was clarified to below the, there were, I think, it was either two or three, sort of low, medium, high, I'm trying to remember exactly how we presented that. It is below the low number, so we feel very confident that the number that we have is going to provide what the stakeholders are looking for, for the junior high school.
Great. Thank you. The other item, I just wanted mainly to get, make sure there was an announcement, one, I guess, it was the senior high school, the, the amount, the figure I think we're seeing totaled, the 28 million, it's a little less than what we were originally talking, which was, I think, the 29 million when we were, when we were discussing the projects, and I believe most of that is because we've decided to table a lot of the senior high school auditorium work. Is, is that correct?
That is correct. The overall number, in addition, we have continued to coordinate and negotiate with our subcontractors, making sure they have a complete scope of work,
Yeah.
but also making sure we're getting the best value for the district.
Yeah.
There's no doubling up and all that. And so, yes, we've taken out most of the senior high school auditorium's scope in addition to what was presented in the discussions previously. The rigging and all is still in. But we've also achieved a significant reduction in pricing. I mean, it's percentages, you know, single-digit percentages,
Yeah.
but that's also reflected into reduced cost.
So it does mention a potential future project for the senior high school auditorium, so it's not completely off of the table, it's just something that we, we are not ready to include in this, this agreement.
From my perspective,
Yeah.
we, we have, you know, we have a scope of work that at some time, the school district may want to reengage in that discussion, and we're very far down the road to be able to engage with a lot of the discussion. I'm not going to say completed, but, you know, well along, so we don't have to, we're not going to need to start from the beginning.
Yeah.
We can start at an 80 or 90% understanding, and then, you know, work through exactly what the needs are at that time.
Okay. And, and the final question I have was on Schedule C, which talked about, I think, the rebates. When we had viewed the presentation, I think, a month or two ago, there, there was definitely the $2.5 million rebate that, that was discussed, and I'm not sure where that was coming from, the Inflation Reduction Act potentially. I did not see that mentioned in that rebate table. Is that, could you explain to the board a little bit how, how that would work?
Yeah, so there's, the rebates are really, in that table are more reflective of energy-related rebates, so the utility companies would be rebating for some of the efficient equipment that we're using.
Yeah.
That's sort of an incentive to use more efficient rather than medium, medium level of efficiency. The, all the tax credits that are part of the project related to the geothermal heat pumps, buildings, those would not be part of our contract. We will be aiding the school district in
Getting those submitted.
any information. We need to receive those funds in terms of IRS filings or anything like that.
Okay.
We may not file the paperwork, but we'll provide all the information to do that.
Okay. So we have to beat up Mr. Feig to make sure that gets done? Not, not literally, but
I can neither condone.
Okay, okay. Now, that, that was, that was all the questions I had on the agreement. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Before you take off, I have a quick question for you, if you have a mind. On page A18 of the report, there's, there are some notes about the Owatn School, and something I hadn't seen before, and I just have a question about, is the, is the fact that the, the solar system at the, at Owatn is not working, and there's no scope of work to repair that. Is it cost prohibitive to repair that? Are we losing anything by not having that operational in terms of, you know, potential energy savings costs? What are the future plans for that system in terms of, you know, whether it's, whether it has value in replacing?
So, right now, the, in, my understanding is the inverter is not working, and that would need to be replaced or upgraded. That system was installed originally with the building, so the efficiency of the panels are probably half of what, if you were to do that today, probably half of the production for the number of panels. We did not spend much time on that, looking at whether that should be, you know, what, what would the cost be to turn it back on? That's something we certainly could look at going forward.
Unfortunately, Mr. Feig isn't here tonight, but I do recall when I spoke to him that there, there actually was somebody looking at getting that operational again, too, because it would help power some of the library. I, I don't have any more details than that, though, unfortunately.
Yeah, okay. I just didn't want to, you know, I just kind of wondered what the plan, what the long-term plan was for that. I mean, if the, if the panels are no longer of value because they've lost their efficiency, that's, you know, one thing, but if we could repair it reasonably and, and, and get, make it profitable or worth our while to have it operational, I think that's would be a
Yeah, just to be clear, there, the efficiency of the panels as installed has not reduced Yeah, just to be clear, there, the efficiency of the panels as installed has not reduced significantly. So what, so those panels might be 12, 13% conversion efficiency and that's been retained. It's just the technology today is in the low twenties. Yeah. So they haven't degraded any more than, uh, you know, just to be clear, yeah.
Okay. If no further discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Dr. Herring, that is it for my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. Policy Committee, Dr. Hamburger.
Dr. Herring, we just have one item on the Policy Committee, uh, section of the agenda. Um, it's recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following policy for second reading, policy, uh, 220, which is student expression and dissemination of materials.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
That's all for our section. Thank you, Dr. Herring.
Thank you. Athletics, extracurricular activities, Mrs. Wilson.
Yes, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the dissolution of the cooperative agreement originally entered into and approved by the Board of School Directors on October 13th, 2009 for football between Exeter Township School District and Antietam School District.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Can, can we confirm the, the two Antietam students that are currently in the agreement will stay and be grandfathered because I think there was some uncertainty there or something we had to check with?
So it's my understanding that they will be grandfathered into our program if Antietam does not secure their own, another co-op. If Antietam secures the, another co-op, then they have to then go play with that other team. But if they're not able to do so, then absolutely the students will stay with us.
And will the, will they stay with us? How, how old are these kids? Are they juniors, seniors, sophomores? Will they stay?
Yeah.
Until they graduate?
I'm not sure about that. It just would depend on if Antietam would then get, not get a co-op this year, but if they got one next year, then they can only stay with us while Antietam doesn't have a co-op.
So as long as they don't have a co-op, they can stay?
Right.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
All right. No further discussion. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Exeter Community Education Foundation, Dr. Battler.
Yes, Dr. Herring. Okay. A big thank you to our sponsors and attendees for making our first Casino Night Gala fundraiser. An amazing night and a success. It was a wonderful way to celebrate 15 years of supporting Exeter schools and students. A huge thank you. Also, um, I would like to, I noticed something on their website as I was scrolling and I was in holiday mode because, you know, Black Friday's coming up. And I do just want to remind everybody that ECEF has posted, um, on their Amazon wishlist website for any teachers that you want to buy gifts for, you can go on the website and buy something that they've already picked out, which my neighbors and I went together, um, last year a few, and we got them something that they actually wanted versus me going, I have no idea what to get this teacher. So I just want to remind everybody about that. Um, and that's all from that committee.
Thank you very much. BCTC, Mr. Fidler.
Uh, yes, just one item, um, in addition to the minutes that I forwarded. Um, I reported, I guess about a year ago, that BCTC had completed a project for NASA. They, the kids made, uh, the machining, uh, department made these handles that are actually in use on the International Space Station. Well, it looks like they're going to be doing another project with NASA. So I just think it's, it's great, it's great for the kids who are working on the project. It's great PR for the program. I know we just had two open houses. I hope lots of Exeter families went, but that's another, another feather in their cap, another project with NASA. So that's, that's the headline for tonight. There's, there was no meeting in November and the next meeting will be, I think it's December 17th. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you very much. BCIU Board of Directors and Legislative Liaison, Dr. Hamburger.
Well, thanks, Dr. Herring. Um, our board met, our BCIU board met last Thursday, November 16th for its regular business meeting. Um, in addition to the regular board business, there were, uh, there was a recognition of six members who wouldn't be returning. That's about a third of that, um, of that group. Uh, and then the, uh, subsequently the, they canceled the board meeting, uh, for December. So the next BCIU board meeting will be held on January 18th, beginning with the committee of the whole at 6:15. So hopefully we'll have a representative by then for the, from the district. Uh, in terms of legislative, um, some of our folks from the district did attend the COLA meeting, the council or the Committee on Legislative Action. It was on November 14th, I think, uh, Mr. Fidler was in attendance, Dr. Howler, Mr. Feig, myself. Um, the meeting featured, uh, Mr. Kevin Boucher, who was a PSBA Chief Advocacy Officer. He did a slide presentation for us that contained a lot of good information. Few things that he brought up, you know, in terms of what's happening from his perspective from PSBA as, as Chief Advocacy Officer. Um, he said there's no progress in the fiscal code bill, uh, due to the divided legislature. I think we all knew that. Um, he said, um, he, he went on to, I guess, talk a little bit about the PSBA's legislative priorities, which were reestablished at the most recent, uh, PSBA delegate assembly. I don't know who attended for us at the district. Who, Julia did? Oh, you, you guys, you two guys. Okay. And I was, I was in attendance for the BCIU. Um, but they, at that, at that assembly, they did, um, reaffirm the, uh, the primary legislative priorities. And I think we know what they are. They pretty well, uh, mirror what they have at the IU in terms of what, through COLA, you know, it's trying to get investment from the state and the federal government in terms of financing public education. It's prioritizing mental health. It's charter school reform, particularly cyber charter reform, uh, and then opposing any efforts that would kind of promote school voucher of programs, you know, for those students who are attending non-public schools. That's essentially taking money away from public education and giving it to, to non-public students with no accountability in, involved. Um, and then he, he ended that portion of the program with some, uh, some of the proposed legislation in Harrisburg that was of interest or pertinent to public schools. Um, and then, you know, finally, I guess, you know, he, there were some documents that were reviewed by, uh, the, um, the folks who are, um, leading the, uh, the COLA effort in Berks County. Uh, one of the superintendents, I forget which one it was, Christie, uh, who talked a little bit about.
Uh, I think it was the superintendent from Brandywine, Mr. Pottinger.
Yeah.
He does a great job.
Yeah, it was him. Yeah. Mm-hmm. And he was, he was kind of reviewing some of the, the, uh, the documents that, and I think the one that I sort of wanted folks to be aware of and that I thought was most relevant, I sent it to you as, as an accompanying document, was the decline in, um, it was a graph actually that showed the decline in the number of uh, new teachers who were, who were, um, uh, being, um, certified in Pennsylvania over the last 10 years. And, um, and how many new, um, teacher, um, or I guess emergency certificates are being, um, issued. And what's happened now is in, in the course of the years now, I mean, the past couple of years, there's been, uh, a, a change in the process where there's actually more emergency certifications that are being approved than new, new teachers being certified in, in, in programs. And that is a dramatic difference. 10 years ago, there were about 16,000 students, uh, per year who were moving on with teacher certifications. Now they're down to about 6,000 per year or, or less. And that's a pretty dramatic impact. So one of the things that I think was being pressed at the, for advocacy at, at the county level, uh, and was added to, I think, the COLA priorities, uh, which made a difference for PSBA, which was the focus on really emphasizing this, uh, issue with teacher preparation and, and what we need to do to kind of incentivize teachers to get to, or students to, uh, choose public education as a, as a career in, in Pennsylvania. So it's a, it's a, it's, I don't know whether it's at a crisis level. I mean, you folks see it, you know, the, our administrators see it and deal with it all the time, but it's, I mean, it's something that's worthy of action, I think, at some point in terms of the legislature and kind of, uh, helping districts with this crisis.
I would say that we've been more fortunate perhaps than some other districts. Uh, and I, I think a lot of it has to do with the recruitment of teachers by teachers in the district. Um, this also tends to be a district where people want to come home and teach in their home district. So a number of our staff, they live in this community and, um, their kids are in the schools. And I think that is the best, um, advertisement of the way that people feel about education in Exeter. It's really a tribute to, um, our teachers and just to the, the people wanting to be here. Uh, but most particularly in the area of special education, we are at a crisis level. Um, districts that pay substantially higher than us have a number of special education openings. Um, it is very challenging to get, uh, teachers who want to teach in an MDS class or in a life skills class. Um, and those are our students who are, are most vulnerable, um, who we really need dedicated people for and to be with, with, to our children. They need that support. Again, we've been more fortunate than, than most. Um, but the other really critical level that we're seeing is in the math and, and sciences. Um, people are just not going into, um, education in those particular fields. And as I look at our, uh, teaching, uh, staff in Exeter, um, they're, they're, we're, we're starting to get older. Um, we do, we have brought in a number of, of teachers that are, are recent graduates. Um, but the majority of the teachers that we're bringing in are teachers from other districts, again, who live in this community and their kids are in the school and they just, they just really want to work in Exeter. Um, so, um, again, that's great for us, but it's not something that I think is sustainable.
I just want to comment that the, uh, the, the next COLA meeting is scheduled for February the 13th. Uh, it'll feature Hannah Barak, who is the, um, PASBO, uh, Executive Director. That'll be interesting. So.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Township Borough Liaison, Mr. Mel.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. Uh, the only thing I have to mention is that there will be a public hearing that takes place at 6:00 PM on November 28th at the Dunn Community Center for the purpose of taking public comment and deliberation on the adoption of an ordinance to change the zoning map to include the, uh, property along Lorraine Road. Um, it is to change the zoning to urban residential. As you may recall, this is for the 216 unit apartment building being proposed by Metropolitan Development Group. Uh, the zoning amendment would be considered for adoption at the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting on December 11th, following that, uh, that public hearing. And, uh, as just a reminder to the board, we have not taken any official position on this, uh, neither for nor against. Um, and, but anyone is willing to attend as an individual and, and speak as an individual, uh, taxpayer if they so desire. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. We have no one signed up for public comments. So would anyone on the board like to be heard at this point?
I would. I had two things, quite frankly. Uh, I spoke with the interim township manager concerning the sign that we have discussed in the past, that we could not put up directing, uh, giving directions to our campuses. Uh, if you look at the new light poles that are going up, they have the brackets there for the hometown hero type banners and stuff like that. I, when I talked to him, I said, could we possibly get the one at the end of, uh, 37th Street to put, uh, the directions up there on that sign? I sent the, uh, email to several of you who would be involved in that. And since I won't be here to follow it up, I, uh, I'll let Charlie Adams harass you all instead of me. But, uh, that's one thing. So I just want to mention that to the entire group. The second thing was the test scores that were published in the Eagle. It's history, but I would like, just, again, I'm not going to be able to follow up, but are you confident, Christie, that the changes that you have initiated address what I consider our poor showing countywide? Uh, I don't like to see us out of the top three. And, uh, or what are we doing to correct those?
So we're, we're a pretty competitive group here and we don't, we, we don't want to be out of the top three either. So we have been looking at the scores and plan on doing a data presentation for the board. You're welcome to come.
Well, thank you.
We'll send you a personal invite. So just because you're not sitting there, it doesn't mean you can't be here. Um, but we have, again, started looking at the scores. We were very concerned, obviously, about the scores last year. Um, so we started to make changes. One of the biggest changes that we made last year was really with the professional development time that we had, we really started digging into the data and then making plans, uh, to target certain areas, uh, for our students. And we also brought in Dr. Hoyt to start to look at the math. Um, we did see some growth, particularly at the elementary schools and Reifden, um, regarding the test scores. While it, it doesn't look remarkable, um, because you're not seeing the comparison, we are not the highest, but we are certainly, you know, not the lowest. So we, we were, um, pleased with some of the growth that we saw at the elementary level. And I think that the teachers also felt pleased with some of the growth that they seen. Having said that, it's just not, it's just not good enough. Uh, so kind of going back and retooling this year, uh, we've dedicated our half days uh, to looking at data and then our full days for doing required PD for the state or some of the other PD that we're doing. But again, our main focus is benchmarking students, meaning that we test them, then we look at their data, and then the teachers develop a plan. Um, so that, that is our whole year is looking at that. We've also are now going to start looking at PSSA samplers, which are, um, sample questions that come from the state, uh, because what we're finding is that while our teachers are teaching the information, the standardized test questions sometimes use different language. They use different test language. So now we're honing in on that. Uh, so we are, um, we are very focused on, uh, looking at that and making adjustments and making sure that we have incremental changes. Uh, tonight you approved two representatives for the comprehensive plan. Um, as you know, the comprehensive plan currently is 100% for graduation, 100% for seventh grade, uh, math, and 100% for third grade reading. And even the state doesn't have that. If you look at the SPP, uh, scores, they don't even have that, um, as their goals. They have interim targets. So to make sure that we're aligned with what the state is saying we have to hit, we are, um, still staying with third and seventh grade, but our interim targets are going to be along with the state. So that way we can, um, measure back our progress along with state expectations. So that's all the behind the scenes work that we're doing, um, at the administrative level and then with the staff.
Would you let me know when that brief's going to go down?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well.
Appreciate it.
We, yeah. Well, we're going to miss you.
I was happy about that when I was shooting.
You're, you and Dr. Hamburger are welcome to come back anytime and hang out with us.
Okay. No one else? All right. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, December 5th at 6:00 PM for our reorganization meeting and committee of a whole. Hearing no objections, we'll adjourn. Good evening. Have a great, happy Thanksgiving and please stay for cake. You. Stay for cake.